Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call the order this business meeting of the Tacoma School Board of Directors, Thursday, May 14th, 2020. General Counsel, would you please call the roll?
Yes, good evening. President Hines.
Here.
Vice President Cobb.
Here.
Director Baumright.
Here.
Director Keating.
Here.
And Director Leon is absent. Is he excused, President Hines?
Excused this evening, yes, thank you.
And we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Item number three, adoption of agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I so move.
I second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Item number four, recognition, 4.1 recognition of seven Tacoma High Schools for earning National Academic Recognition from U.S. News and World Report. Mr. Gopel.
Thank you, President Hines and members of the board. This is a great opportunity to highlight the excellent work of our high school leadership, our teachers, and our support staff. Each year, U.S. News and World Report evaluates high schools nationwide, and this evaluation looks at how all students in the school and disadvantaged students perform against their state's averages. They look at whether graduation rates meet or exceed a national standard. They look at participation and performance in advanced placement exams. And based on that data, the magazine issues national and state rankings for the best among the best. And based on this formula, Tacoma Public Schools had seven high schools make the magazine's 2020 rankings. That's the most schools we have ever had make that list. And this year's TPS honorees and their state rankings are the Science and Math Institute at number 47, Wilson High School at number 121, Lincoln High School at number 185, Foss IB World School at number 210, Mount Tahoma High School at number 220, School of the Arts at number 241, and for the first time, Oakland High School made the list tied at number 249. So, great honor for all of those schools. To accept the recognition tonight on behalf of all of the high school principals is Executive Director of Secondary Education Doug Hostetter. Doug, congratulations.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you, President Hines, Vice President Cobb, members of the board, Superintendent Santorno, and Deputy Garcia. It's great to be here this evening to represent the high school principals. As you know, they would much rather be here in person to receive this recognition on behalf of their hardworking staffs, but the virtual nature of our school board meetings at this time makes that rather difficult. As Dan mentioned, the metrics that the U.S. News and World Report uses to measure a school's effectiveness, I find it noteworthy that they closely align to the board's goals and benchmarks for high schools here in Tacoma. That's clear evidence that what gets measured gets done. And so, the high schools, you know, have been working very hard at building programs and systems in support of the three areas: graduation, performance on state tests, and college preparedness. We've gotten some statewide recognition, and it's also great for our high schools to continue to receive nationwide recognition as well. Now, if principals were here, they would no doubt be spreading the credit around to their teachers, staff, administrative teams, and I join them in doing so. I mean, they're the ones on the ground level, working with kids each and every day. But since I'm here for them, I want to make sure to give our high school principals a shout out because research is very clear that there are very few instances where you have a high-performing school without a high-performing principal. So, thank you, board, for recognizing our seven high schools. I'm very proud of them. I know you're very proud of them, and their teachers and students and strong leadership teams continue to do outstanding work on behalf of our students. So, thank you very much for having us here this evening or having me here this evening.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Vice President Cobb.
Oh, I'm just excited for the continued success of all of our high schools, and it's all of our high schools. They're all doing great things. It's not one part of town where all the accolades lie or where all the... So, I just love to see how we continue to get better and learn from each other in Tacoma. So, congratulations to all the high schools.
Thank you. Director Keating.
Yeah, I just echo what Vice President Cobb said. As the schools are being listed when I read about it earlier, I just thought about all the teachers and the hard work that they have put in and are continuing to put in, and the instructional coaches, and so I just want to congratulate everyone that made this possible.
Thank you. Director Baumright, any questions or comments?
Again, yeah, just again, everybody is saying all of it. I wanted to say just fabulous news, and thanks to all the kids, the students who have been working really hard to be part of the change and to be leading the change. And so, it's all of the employees, the staff that are working with these kids, but the kids have drive and power, and I'm proud of them. So, thanks for the work that you're doing.
And I would just add, this is awesome, and with all of the challenges that we faced as a district and as a community, as a state and a nation over the last several weeks, it sure feels good to stop and celebrate, exhale, and just recognize the amazing things that are happening in classrooms, on campuses, throughout the city in the Tacoma Public School District. It's just awesome, and hopefully it's motivation for everybody to continue. We will get through this, but it is nice to be able to stop and recognize. I feel like in the past, when we've had these ceremonies, is there a banner or something that goes with this?
Oh, I'm sure Dan and his team will put together something nice for us.
So, it would be awesome, you know, at the appropriate time to be able to do that recognition because it is so rewarding for those principals to be able to stand up and publicly acknowledge and thank their staff and the students. I think if we could figure out a way at some point to get out to the schools to do that, that that would be great. So, there's my two cents. Superintendent Santorno, did you have anything that you'd like to add?
I'm just really proud of those principals of the work they do and the way that teachers come together in collaboration. What's so nice is that when you get this award, it's real evidence that the teachers are working together. Everybody's not going into their own classroom and doing their own thing, but instead, they're collaborating, working with each other, talking about best practices, and that's what you see at each one of these schools, and that is really, really exciting. So, proud of them.
Thank you. And Doug, thank you for your leadership. You're kind of the glue that cements all of that secondary learning together. So, appreciate all of your work and leadership, and let's keep it going. We've got a good thing going in Tacoma. Let's keep it, keep it moving.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for having me.
You bet. Thank you. We'll move on in our agenda. Item number five, superintendent's report. 5.1 is the budget update. Superintendent Santorno.
Yes, I've asked Rosalyn to give you a budget update, so I'm going to turn it over to Rosalyn.
Thank you so much, and Tom will bring up our presentation. We have been working to continue feverishly to balance our budget. It is a long process, and we are making great headway on achieving our goal of a balanced budget. I do want to give you a brief update on the process and where we're at with it. If you could just go to that next slide for me, please. So, just a reminder that we do run a two-year budget cycle, and the first year of our budget cycle was last year, and that is where we seek proposals from individual budget writers, and they tell us what they think that they need in order to accomplish our strategic plan goals. In the second year, we have aligned ourselves with the state legislative cycle where they have a larger budget in the first year, and the second year is more of a supplemental adjust and review type year. And so, we're in the second year, as legislature is, and what we expect this year would normally just be some minor modifications, addressing any significant issues that have occurred throughout this year, and then addressing any state revenue changes that might come. Next slide, please. So, in our bigger budgeting process, we offer an alignment to our strategic plan that includes these steps. It identifies funding. It determines our priorities, which are actually our strategic plan goals. It allocates resources out to individual priorities within our strategic plan goals. We work as a team, a cabinet team, as well as in the departments to identify what it is that we're trying to accomplish. Those are generally benchmarks, but sometimes in other departments where we don't have benchmarks, we try to identify what goals we're trying to accomplish, and with that, we find which proposals make the most sense to support. Once we're done with that process, we start the buying process. This year, we really only do three things. We identify our funding, we buy, and then technically, we communicate everything out as it's occurring or after it has occurred. So, at this point in time, we are at the buying stage. We're trying to identify, we know what our revenues are, now we're trying to identify what our expenditures should be, and then work through the communication aspects next. If you'll go to that next slide for me, please. As we're working to identify all of our cost components, we will be provided with, or we were provided, excuse me, with the guiding principles from the board. So, these are the things that we're discussing and working through first and foremost, as we start to identify what adjustments need to be made to the budget. And if you'll go to that next slide for me as well, these were approved on February 14th by the board, but they were done after a couple of months of review, and these are the criteria that were also included in that set of expectations. So, this is something that we'll talk about at cabinet level, and we talk about it in the budget office pretty regularly. You know, are we doing things that are meeting these criteria so that we have that framework in mind, your framework in mind, as we work to move forward with balancing? If you'll go to that next slide for me, please. Within the development cycle, there are a number of tasks. I would say there's probably a couple hundred tasks that need to be accomplished in order to balance the budget in various different types of analyses that we do. Those are usually incorporated into our revenue estimates and expenditure impacts. We have pretty much completed those two tasks. We have a pretty good understanding of where our revenues are for this next year with some holdouts. We get some of our federal allocations a little later in the summer, so we have to make some estimates to that. And then, as far as expenditures go, we go through all of the details and try to go line by line and accounting by accounting unit to make sure that we've incorporated all of our expenditures. So, we have done most of that work, and at this point in time, our work in process would be these light green boxes with the dark black around them. We're now in the process of identifying if we have a deficit, and we do have a deficit, but we're identifying how big that deficit is, and then we are working to identify what adjustments need to be made. We will do that through cabinet evaluations and recommendations, and then from there, we will bring that on deck to the board. At this point in time, our expectation is that we will set up individual board meetings or meetings with each of you in some fashion so that we can have a conversation around our budgeting process, so you can ask us any questions that you have and that we can share with you the identified strategies for addressing the deficit. That will give you an opportunity to preview those before we bring those out to the public and to provide us with any concerns or worries or expectations or needs beyond what we might have seen in our development process. We'll also work to communicate and identify any staffing impacts. If there are any, we want to make sure that we are communicating with individuals that might be affected before there's a public communication component. And then finally, depending on all of those activities, we will make any modifications that may be needed. Next slide, please. So, as I indicated, there is a deficit for this year, and I feel like I'm in such a squishy place, and I hate to say that. I'm not a squishy person. I'm a finance person. We like absolutes and numbers and hard facts. But what I can say is that we are fairly confident in our basic education shortfall being around $7 million. And that is a number, it's a big number, but it's a little less than 2% of our budget. So, we feel we have a pretty good plan in place to work to address that deficit. Where we're struggling is that we have categorical impacts that are more difficult to deal with than we have anticipated. And every year, we expect our categoricals, for the most part, to live within their means of revenue, and we have a few things that have popped up this year that are making that very challenging to do. So, without going too far into detail, because we're still working through those details, we will be able to share more information when we get back together with each of the board members in their meetings. This year, we really expected to be our normalizing year. It's the, we had such significant cuts last year that we were expecting that this would just be a quiet year, and it's not as significant as it could have been, but we are surprised with COVID and all of the expectations and worries and wonders for what's coming as to how to address things. We do have a number of strategies to address our deficit that we're working towards, and we want to work on making sure that we're utilizing any non-renewable funding sources, first and foremost, trying to cost shift where we can into available program funding or categorical funding that has very specific purposes associated with it. We are working on identifying reductions and eliminations, and we're trying to identify what kinds of fund balance or savings may be applied to offset our deficit. Go to that next slide for me. Just to share a few next steps around our budget. In addition to the meetings that we'll be having with the individual board meetings, or board members, excuse me, we will be bringing back a budget and finance update regularly. We're also working still on preparing public feedback options. We want those to be meaningful to what we're experiencing currently, and so there's a little bit of a put the cart before the horse if we get too far down the road with public feedback without having the real impact of the decisions that we need to make. And then, we are still on target at this point for a July adoption and a June budget hearing, although I'd say the next two weeks are somewhat critical in identifying whether we'll be able to meet that deadline or not. And it's a self-imposed deadline. We're required by the state to adopt a budget by August 31st. So, we have time, but we want to try to get a budget in place so that we can start working on next year's issues. So, I'm happy to field any questions, and I thank you for your time.
Questions or comments? Vice President Cobb.
I have one question and one comment. Can you say a little bit more about the sources of the deficits? You mentioned that there's some challenges with the categorical programs that you're still working through. We'll hear more about that, but big picture, where's the source of that $7 million deficit?
Yeah, it's the primary... That's a great question. I mean, if I were to list out the things that are driving the $7 million deficit, I'd probably need to list out 25 different things. There's no one linchpin. Certainly, salary expenses are 85% of our budget. They drive a good portion of our increases. And, you know, a couple of things that impact that would be implicit price deflator. You know, the state gives us a cost of living adjustment that we pass on for our state-funded individuals, but we also pass it on for non-state funded, and so that drives a cost. Salary increments drive a cost. Those are some of the cost impacts that we're trying to address, but there's no one thing. Director Cobb.
Okay, that's helpful. Then my comment is, in the last couple of years, we've had to make significant cuts that you already alluded to, and I remember some of the... Well, and I'll say, I've done a fair amount of reading on just different strategies for reopening and all these scenarios and planning, what reopening looks like, and a fair number of the recommendations make reference to planning and coordination being led centrally. And so, I know that a number of the cuts that we made were to central office staff, and just as we were transitioning to distance learning, a lot of the, I know, understand that a lot of the team and cab were working to put together like the continued learning packets, and there was a lot of coordination happening centrally. So, just as we move forward with all the different scenarios and planning as they unfold, I just, I want, the thing that I want to keep an eye on is what, if we have enough staffing centrally to do some of the coordination work that will need to happen to adjust to the new norm delivery mechanisms, and if we do need to add capacity there, being mindful of communicating clearly or documenting clearly, you know, just having the rationale in place because that was a point. I believe that we need to have central, a lot of central support for certain things in order to ensure equity across the district. So, if we do need to add capacity back there, just, I just want us to be talking about why and where that capacity needs to go. This is a comment. I know you're all still figuring out the hundreds of decisions you need to make or plan for, but that's just something on my mind lately.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Baumright, questions or comments?
No, I think I understand the process, and I'm looking forward to seeing as it develops and figure out what questions I have in the one-on-one meetings.
Thank you. Director Keating, questions or comments?
I think, no, and actually, Director Cobb's questions kind of was along some of the things I was wondering about. One question I think I have, and I just don't know that I have enough information, is, so on the WASD calls, the state school board director calls that I've been on, there's a lot of talk about tax collection and impacts that that may have, and I know that it's very different from community or county to county. Is there any, are we looking at facing any of those kinds of impacts?
Right. So, Pierce County did give a tax delay till June 1st to pay your personal property taxes, and it was for individuals or businesses that didn't already pay through their bank. So, we got about 40% of our revenue through the bank automatically without any worry about delay at all. But we have been tracking very closely what's happening because we use those resources, right? We've been tracking very closely what's been happening, and we're seeming to be okay. We had about $3 million that was different between what we expected to see in April and what we would see in April normally, but April's our highest month. We get about 30% of our taxes in April. So, it hasn't been a significant impact for us, and it really, I expect that it's more likely to be just a delay, a timing issue, more than it will be that we're going to lose revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Rosalyn, I just have two questions. One, where are we sitting with the reserve? At what percent?
Right. So, we are right around 6% right now, but I actually believe that it may be just slightly higher than 6% when we get to the end of the year.
Okay, and by policy, we have to maintain at least 5%.
Correct.
What is that, what is that 6%? Let me phrase it this way. If we have a $7 million deficit, what's the delta between the 5% and where you think the fund balance may actually land, 6% or 7%?
Yeah, I feel pretty comfortable that we have about $5 million that we could apply towards next year and be in a, that's conservative space.
Okay. I'm also mindful that when we went through the capital bond, that the guidance or the feedback we received from our bond council is that lenders actually would like to see that higher than 5%. So, I think that we'll need to think about, be thoughtful in how we are applying that money, but that's why we set the 5%. It's nice to have the flexibility to use that money if need be. So, thank you for you and your team's diligence on putting us in that position. When I looked in the appendix, I saw on the 2021 state budget slide, the eight and a half million dollars increase under SEB, that there's a net savings of $1.4 million.
Correct.
Savings from what? Because my understanding was our district costs had actually increased and pretty sizably since the state mandated everybody be covered through SEB?
Yes, it's, that's just the budgeted amount from last year to the budgeted amount from this year, and I think we've had this conversation before. So, I think what you're asking is, if I look back at the total cost, it's been upwards of $8 million that we've had to invest into SEB. But from last budget to this budget, we had to allocate less for the purpose of spending on SEB.
Okay, so it's still costing us more than pre-SEB, but you anticipate 2021 will be less than last year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Rosalyn. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Item number 5.2, the COVID-19 update. Superintendent Santorno.
Yes, thank you. I've talked about so many of the different features of COVID. Today, I'm going to really focus on two, and that is the school access planning. You know, what are we going to do about school in the fall? And secondly, what is on everybody's mind, graduation. So, to give you a little bit of feedback about that first or a context for it, I want the public to know, and I want the board to know, that we have had this emergency operations command. So, it's an EOC. We have come together since February, and beginning, we met multiple times a week. We met Saturdays, we met Sundays, we met twice daily, and it was to make all the decisions that needed to be turned on a dime. We've gotten lots of commendations for, commendations for, you know, getting things out quickly, the packets and the food and the day camps, and all of those are because of the flexibility that was built into that EOC. And so, they continue to work, and they're also the ones that provided the professional development for, put it online for the teachers. I really want to make sure that I've spent time talking about how incredible my leadership team is. They've done an incredible job. So, the two challenges that I'm going to talk about is school in the fall, and I'll be honest with you, there is not a day that goes by, no matter what group I'm in, no matter what call I'm on, that somebody doesn't say, Carla, what's school going to look like in the fall? What are you doing? What, you know, when are we, when's the first day of school? When's, you know, are we going to summer school? And unfortunately, most of the time, my answer is, we're not sure. And part of that has been, is that this board has been adamant that we follow the guidance. I think Director Hines always says that he is a recovering emergency management person, and I think that he has, he's been the one that has brought us, follow the guidelines of the Pierce County Health Department, follow the guidelines of the, you know, of the Pierce Emergency Management System, follow the governor's mandates, you know, and that's really what we have done. And so, we don't know what school is going to look like in the fall, but what I want the public to know is that certainly, we are planning for scenarios. Any of you that have been reading knows Director Cobb sent me an article today that there's lots of ideas out there about what it is going to look like, and there are some good, there is good advice about what you should prepare for. And so, we have set out three different small groups, a subset of our EOC with additional personnel that, you know, fit those different categories. And the first one's just about school access planning. Our parents are very aware that our graduates and that are our school students and our teachers still have materials in school because when we left, we thought we were coming back soon. And so, the governor's guidance has in the medical, the Pierce County Medical Health has said, no, do not let people go back in and get their belongings yet. So, we have followed that advice, and we have not let people go back in to get their materials. So, we know that we're going to have to do that. So, we're putting policy in place and protocols, protocol's a better word, protocols for how to return uniforms, textbooks, musical instruments, school property. We have had emergency procedures for students who need to go back in and get medication and things like that, but it's been very methodical. We have seniors who need to get personal things out of their lockers and their desks. But again, we're adamant that we're going to keep it on a socially distant protocol and make sure that we do it so that no one. So, the team is collaborating specifically and directly with the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department through Shalay to make sure that that's management is based on protocols, planning, and staffing needs to be safe. And we are adamant, and I have been adamant that we want to make sure that we keep all of our personnel safe when they do that. So, one group is looking at school access planning. Another group is just talking about work readmittance protocols. How do we get people back to work, and how do we, how do we get kids back to school? What are the procedures? What are the protective personal equipment that we're going to need? What are school modifications? What are school modifications? You know, what kind of tape are you going to put on the floor? That shows, you know, that you can move, you know, that you're separated by six feet? And how long will it last? And where are we going to get it? And how many school systems across the United States are ordering all the same things? So there are so many decisions that need to be made about how we modify and how we look at school differently based on a scenario that we really don't know exactly what it exists. But we want to make sure that when the governor lifts the restrictions on the workplace, that we have our staff, both cab staff, our COO, our operations folks, our annex folks at our school buildings, that they know exactly how it's going to work when they get back in school. So we have a subgroup working on that. And then the other thing is just about the fall return. And again, we're looking at different scenarios. And if you're like me, you've heard lots of different ideas and rumors about what schools can start or that it may not start. And so we have to prepare, we have to be really nimble and flexible to talk about a lot of different options. So this team, again, is closely following the guidance from the governor and state superintendent. The state superintendent just put together a back-to-school, return-to-school task force. And we're trying to make, I have personally advocated for Director Hines and our nurse, our head nurseperson, Shalay Hogg, to be on that committee because we want to make sure that there's a good liaison between our folks and the folks that are on this committee. We've looked at all kinds of different ideas, but we know it's not certain. But, you know, if we prepare for different scenarios, staggered days, staggered hours, grade level options, a combo of in-class time and remote learning. And, you know, we're just really looking at all the options from A to Z so that we can make sure that when the guidance comes out, we're ready to act and to move to the next step. The work of this team will be critical in getting our district prepared to deliver successfully for our students and staff. And certainly, we've learned a lot along the way. We're most, we're better prepared today than we were two months ago to do this work. Certainly, devices and access to internet are two things we're still in the middle of working on and delivering and have people that are working on getting that done. And it's all a part of that committee. So anyway, I'm confident that we'll be ready for whatever that scenario is and that we're just waiting to make sure that it looks swell. Graduation. We've had a lot of emails from incredible students and their families about graduation. And I know that we've said it before, that we grieve the fact that, you know, that we're not going to have a traditional, that it doesn't look like we're going to have a traditional graduation. And I've gotten some criticism from people who say that I've, you know, that I've already buried it and that we're not considering another option, which is not true. If the guidance, again, we're following the guidance from the governor. If it changes and the governor says, yeah, you can have a regular graduation, we still have a reservation at the Tacoma Dome, we will turn on a dime and do graduation if it happens before our dates that have been established. But right now, we're working to stay within the governor's direction. And the state superintendent guidance has come out as late as today about criteria. And what we're confident about is that we have stayed within the guidance. And the other thing I want the public to know is that we have had a planning team that is included, our high school principals who are talking to the leadership teams of our students. And so they've had input. So Deputy Superintendent Dr. Garcia, Doug Hostetter, Prince, the Mount to Homer principal, David McCollgan, Gray principal, Sean Martin, our public information office team have all been collaborating with the high school principals on a ceremony that'll meet those guidelines. And, you know, we've talked frankly with our students. And I don't believe there's a student, maybe a couple, but most students, if you talk to them, they'll say, no, we would have rather had a regular graduation. And we are working to provide some of the things that they're used to in a traditional graduation. Will it be the same? No, it will not be the same. So we've been working from a template of options. Each high school has planned what it wants to do to have included in the celebration. So we've tried to make it special. And each school has put a little different spend on it, spin on it. And we will do a virtual graduation because it really does fit with the governor's and with the state superintendent's guidelines. We'll have a lot of the traditional elements, including student speakers and guest speakers. We'll have slideshows of the graduates. And we're going to make sure we have instructions for the families so that if you want to host an online event or your own meeting, your own meeting, you can do that. And we will be showing the graduation in multiple, in multiple ways. And I've heard positives and negatives. I've heard people who've watched their nieces in New York, you know, or their grandkids, their grandkids in Florida, and they said they loved it because they got to see every piece. So they got, you know, to see a picture of their students and others that felt like, oh, no, it was just too sad. So I, you know, we're going to have a multitude of opinions. But we will be streaming on Facebook, streaming with a closed caption on our website. And for any family who doesn't have an online access, we'll broadcast the graduations on our TV station, which is Channel 25 on Comcast and Channel 26 on Qlik. And I know our board members went in yesterday and recorded, you know, their remarks and their announcements. I know I did mine and it wasn't, it was not the same. But I do know when I went to my car, I thought to myself, whoa, you just did 10 graduations. And so it's not, it's not the same. And we'll miss, you know, we will miss being with those students on that day. We did have guidance from the, from the state superintendent that we could have a healthy socially-distanced masked ham cap and gown distribution parade. And so we did do that. And if you've watched them on Facebook, they were pretty exciting. One of the things I thought to myself, I was worried about just even the cap and gown exchange because my experience with teenagers is it's not easy to keep them apart once they see each other. But our principals did a good job of keeping them distanced. The staff members did a great job of directing. And we feel really, really good that the parades gave our high school staff an opportunity to see their students, to hand out the materials safely and a brief time to celebrate together. And Catherine McCarthy, if you have seen the signs, the custom class 2020 yard signs that are out in the, in the yards, I think they're great. And thanks to Catherine McCarthy for designing those signs. So just in case, the guidance.
Carla, you went mute.
Just the wrong button. Thank you. The guidance that came today said that it starts with the safety, health, and well-being of our students, staff, and their families is the top priority. And so our goal all along has been to have a graduation ceremony that we, that we can predict that it'll be safe and socially distanced. So virtual, the graduation models that met social distancing guidelines in phase one, and Tacoma is currently in phase one, a virtual ceremony that has the online, you know, has the online virtual ceremony that's similar to traditional graduation ceremonies. And, you know, we've had lots of incredible parents that have sent in models and said, do this or that. And have said, hey, in federal way, they're doing it better than you. Why don't you adapt to theirs? And I just want you to know that Dr. Garcia or one of his, or one of the people on the committee have called every one of those districts and said, what exactly are you doing? And what we find out at the bottom of it is that they're, they're mostly, they are doing virtual graduations. They may have a variation that they're taking pictures, you know, in the stadium. And our students are taking pictures, you know, on their own. There's variations. But those people who are adhering to the guidelines are doing a virtual, a virtual graduation. We're asking our graduates to record and submit individual videos. That comes right from the guidance from the, from Chris Reichdahl. And then social media, you know, highlight all you want on social media and let the kids know what's going on. Out of Home, they said, before you plan a ceremony, make sure this is, the safest option is for, right now is for everyone to stay home. And so the virtual ceremony is the best thing to protect our loved ones at home and our adults and our kids. And second, they did endorse a gallery drive, which that's schools or districts that can print and post large signs with pictures of the names of the graduates. And if you watch what happened, and each one of our high schools, when they passed out the cap and gowns, I think it was a good evidence of a gallery drive. We're not, we're not going to make everybody happy. I already know that. And, you know, that's not my job. You know, my job is to do the best we can and honor the guidelines from the state and also to keep our folks safe. And I do want those that haven't had a chance to look at it, to see what some of these drives look like. And so we have a clip from Stadium. Thank you very much for the community and the way you hung in there and that you suggested things. Some of the things that were suggested were, we did do. And I just want you to know, you know, who knows? And maybe that was the other thing, is if the guidance changes before our graduation date, we'll pivot and we'll provide that. We're ready to do that. So watch the cap and gown thing at Stadium. It was great.
Oh, it's really cool.
No sound. I think they didn't have sound.
We're so proud of you. I'm sorry that this year it happened to go this way, but it's really exciting to have you here, okay?
Awesome. Thank you.
So good to see you. Congratulations.
We're doing the best we can and the kids are like with it.
Come on, show off with that.
Happy, happy times. Graduating.
I already know parents, teachers, staff, everyone cares about them a lot. But I think to show it, to see it, to see all these signs, to see the excitement out here, really brings it really home and they understand just in an emotional way, not just a, you know, kind of cognitive way.
For recognition, right? To show them that we're still here, that we're still a community, that we are, that we love them. And they have support and it sucks. And a lot of things got stolen from them too, but we're all making the best of it.
I like it. This is crazy, man.
I miss you guys.
Oh, gosh. My staff is so excited. I hope that the kids feel the love that we have for them, that this is not the way we wanted to say goodbye. Some of these kids, you know, I may not see again. And it just kills me because we've gotten this far together. They are a great, great group of kids. But I want them to feel like we do honor them and they are special and we did have these moments and this is a celebration.
Thank you. Kevin, Kevin, you guys are not miked. I mean, you're, you're not muted. And so anyway, I'm sorry that you missed the, I'm sorry you missed the music. The music really, the really, music really made it. But I think it gives you a flavor of how exciting it was. Graduates of 2020, we love you. And we can't wait to see what you do next. So thank you very much.
Ready. Thank you, Superintendent Santorno. I just want to reiterate a couple of things that the superintendent said with respect to graduation. So in the last 10 days, I've twice spoken with Governor Inslee's office. And, you know, based on input from the community. And I will be the first to tell you that as a board member, this virtual graduation is disappointing when it's compared with the energy that we all feel and experience, those in-person graduations. I mean, I think it's why most of us do the work. It's so rewarding to see the sense of pride that those kids feel and the families feel and that rite of passage of walking across the stage. And there really isn't anything that we can do to replace that. And I understand, you know, the feelings that some parents and families have. And so I took that issue up with the governor's office to articulate that position. And the governor's office was completely understanding of that. And the governor's been pretty consistent in this communication that his top priority is public health. And we have thoroughly looked at ways that we could have some sort of a variation of an in-person graduation. And it just is in conflict with the guidance that the governor's office is providing. And he's providing that guidance based on the Department of Health and what those subject matter experts are telling him. And so, you know, we are still in a position where if that guidance changes, but my last conversation with the governor's office was yesterday. And graduations are upon us and it takes time. And I know all of the work that's going on behind the scenes to try to make this alternative graduation feel special, it just takes an incredible amount of staff time to make something like that happen. So I think we're in a period of time where we probably have a couple of more days. And if that guidance doesn't change, then the virtual option is the best, safest option. And I think that's been the metric that we've used is how can you have the most enjoyable graduation ceremony in the safest way to do that? With that, I'll ask for questions or comments from board members. Vice President Cobb.
I just have a comment. I mean, I guess it relates to both the topic of the COVID update and the graduation planning. And I really appreciate all the details that you shared tonight about graduation planning. It is a really important rite of passage, as Director Hines said. This will be my 20th anniversary of graduation this year. So I, it makes me think about how special that moment is. So I appreciate all the time and energy that's going into making this the best-case scenario as possible. But I do want to raise a consideration for us and for the public as we think about both reopening schools and alternative graduation planning. I think it's not just about whether or not the option is actually safe. I think, and we think about equity and equitable access, it's also about whether there's a perception that it's safe. I can imagine that if our option right now was in-person graduation, there's a good percentage of our students and families who wouldn't perceive it to be safe. So a good percentage of our students and families who would opt out of participating because of having to come in contact with so many people right on the eve of just opening up. And just, it's just a time where people are still trying to figure out how to engage in social life, given all that has happened. So I, again, I appreciate all the time and energy that's gone into making graduation as special as possible. And as we plan for reopening schools in the fall, I know you're already considering this, but in addition to thinking through all the steps that we actually need to take to make schools safe to open, I think a point of engagement with our families and community is just to ask the question. I think a point of engagement with our families and community is just to ask the question of what do parents and community members and family members of all kinds need to be in place in order to feel like school is a safe place again? I think we need to address those issues too, to the best extent that we can. If that means like hand sanitizing stations on every floor, in every hall. I don't know if we can get there or what we'll, where we'll need to get to. But just hearing from the community and families about what they would need to see in order to feel like it's safe to send their kids to school again. I think that's a, a, a important area of consideration that we need to take into account in our planning. But thanks for all the work and the updates about what's happening.
Thank you. Director Bomber, any questions or comments?
Well, thank you. Thank you, Vice President Cobb. Many of the comments that you made were, were top of mind for me as well with really taking a serious consideration as we reopen in the fall, whenever and however that looks, to make sure that we've done some, some really thoughtful and intentional work of engaging families in those decisions and making sure that everyone's feeling comfortable. And so that was one of my comments. And the other was I just, I wanted to share that as these cap and gown events have been happening and they've been popping up on Facebook, it has just been so uplifting and watching them and seeing the kids. And then I have lots of family and friends in the community who have had kids or graduates this year at various high schools. And there's such joy and such appreciation for the teachers. And it's a loss for the kids for sure and the families and for the, for the staff that have been working with these, these students to get them to this point. And I think, I really want to thank everyone that had, who put those events together. I think it was therapeutic for, for everyone and inspirational. And then I, I just wanted to say that I saw that the guidance that the superintendent was talking about, that that came from the Department of Health, the State Department of Health today around the graduation ceremonies and what was allowable and, and what was not. And, you know, I think it's, I think the planning, as Dr., Director Heinze has said, that the planning for something like this is, is so intensive. And it's, most people never see what has to go into something like this. But if you've ever thrown a party of any kind, you know, that even if it's a birthday party for, you know, someone in your family and you're calling a few, you know, people together, it's logistically a nightmare often. And think about this for, for 10 high schools and how that all plays out. And it is, I just really want to thank the administrative staff at CAB and all of the principals and their staffs at each of the, one of the schools that have made this happen. And all the parents that have put in time and energy and the printing unit for, you know, making the boards. And it just goes on and on. And, and so I'm deeply appreciative for everyone to be able to pivot during this stressful time to make, to give these, these graduates something to remember. Thank you.
Superintendent, oh, you are muted.
The Foundation for Tacoma Students paid for the printing of the sign. So we're very grateful to them.
Oh, that's fantastic. Yep. It's great to have partners in the community. Thanks so much to the foundation.
Thank you. Director Keating, any questions or comments?
I just really have more, a couple of comments, I think. And I appreciated Vice President Cobb's comments around feeling safe, perceptions of safety. Cause there's still a lot of discrepancies on how people do perceive safety amid this pandemic. And so as I read, I also read through the guidance that came today about graduation and was reading into what phase two will look like. And we still don't know exactly when phase two is going to happen. There's an estimate and there's just so much that is unknown. That it feels, I feel that as difficult of the decision it is to have virtual graduations versus the traditional in-person. I feel the safety of our community is utmost. So I appreciate the diligence that's gone into that. And I realize that there's grief of loss of expectation and celebration. And there's really no way that, that we can make up for that. And so I just want to reiterate or echo that I really appreciate the diligence that's gone into trying to make something meaningful and celebrate the work that's gone, that our students have gone, put in. And I will say that I actually drove by and I watched some of Wilson's cap and gown ceremony and took pictures and it was just really inspiring and uplifting. And the music, Ms. Ray was amazing. And, and then I also went by Mount Tahoma and I just got to give Mount T a huge shout out. Like they had an airplane flying over. They had, I mean, it was crazy. It was like going to the fair, but in their parking lot. So it was just really heartwarming to see people embrace the circumstances that we are faced with right now, so much that are out of our own control. And so I just, I, I appreciate the community that has embraced where we are for the sake of everyone's safety. And I just want to say thank you to everyone who's, I know we're all sacrificing to some level. And I just want to acknowledge that and say, you know, thank you because we really don't know where this is going to end. And so there's a lot, there's just so much unknown and it's really uncomfortable to not know what's coming. And to just embrace and accept where we are right now, I think is the best thing we can do. So thank you for all of that information, Superintendent.
Thank you. I would add, you know, graduation ceremonies is not a board decision. That's an administrative decision, but the board has been very involved in this process, given the potential public health implications, the feedback that we've received from the community. And I don't think any of us take lightly that responsibility. As elected officials, we are charged with working on behalf of the collective community. And I think we have made every effort possible to listen thoughtfully and authentically. And, but ultimately we have to make a decision. And I think the decision that the superintendent has made to date on the virtual graduation is supported by the board, knowing that it may be unpopular with some. I don't think we get into this work to be lauded and overappreciated. But I think we're confident that that is the tough decision that needs to be made at this time in the interest of public health. So Carla, thank you and your team. I know you guys have spent hours and hours to get us here. And I know nobody's probably ecstatic about what this is going to look like in terms of graduation for 2020. But I, I do think you and your team have made the right decision. And I know my colleagues feel the same way. So thank you for making those tough decisions in the best interest of the city of Tacoma. I did have one question on the reopening. As I listened to Vice President Cobb and Director Keating and Director Bomber, I talk about the assurance of the public and listening to the public, parents and students around what will make them feel safe. How do we do that with staff? I mean, we have around a dozen different bargaining units that provide different services and supports in the district that have, you know, maybe a different perspective on what makes them feel safe. How do, how do we take all of that into consideration so that people truly feel protected and listened to and comfortable coming to the birth environment as we prepare to try to get back to some sort of normal operations in the fall?
So we certainly, you're, you're certainly right. And that the team that's working on the readmittance protocols has certainly heard it not, even not solicited, but you know, heard from people that are saying, hey, I'm not coming back if this isn't in place and this isn't in place and this isn't in place. So we know that we have, you know, different, you know, we have people that have loved ones at home that don't want to come to school and have their young ones, you know, they're, either they're older relatives or they're younger relatives exposed. We've heard certain, lots of stories of our own employees that meet the at-risk categories. And so we, you know, we have to figure out a different procedure for them. They may not be able to teach in a classroom, you know, right away. So you're right. And we're going to have to talk to them and get all the different perspectives of what it looks like. And again, we can't meet probably all the guidelines, but we can be really clear about what guidelines we, we had in place and who we listened to and who we heard from. So that, that's part of that readmittance group.
Thank you. You know, we've all, the board has all seen the guidance today that came or the preliminary work of the back to school, reopening school working group that OSPI pulled together. That was over 160 people, representatives from the Washington State School Directors Association, the Washington Association of School Administrators, the Washington Education Association, state legislators, state department heads and staff, nonprofit groups that are supportive of K through 12 education in the state. And they still have work to do. I think there were seven different scenarios. My understanding is that they had a six-hour Zoom call. I can only imagine six hours on Zoom with 160 people, what that must have been like. And the poor moderator that had to herd all of those cats. But I do think that, and the, the commitment from that working group out to local school districts is that they will have product for our consideration late May, early June, with the acknowledgement that while you can have aspirational hopes of when you might open the school and where under the executive authority of governors, they can mandate the closures of schools. But ultimately the reopening lies with that local education authority. And this school board is going to have to figure out what's in the best interest of the Tacoma community to address a number of the issues that my colleagues have raised this evening. And so I would anticipate while there's no date set, that we'll probably as a group need to have some sort of a study session or committee of the whole so that we can review and evaluate the thoughtful work of our colleagues that are on that working group and apply it to what we think makes most sense in Tacoma. So that's probably a, you know, a mid-June, a mid-June expectation for all of us. I know we're certainly, I get it all the time. What's school going to look like in the fall? What's school going to look like in the summer? And it's all up in the air right now because it's so fluid. But I do appreciate that that ultimate decision to open Tacoma Public Schools will rest with us as the school board, taking recommendations from the superintendent in her capacity as our CEO. Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent Garcia, did you have a comment?
Just real quickly, just to represent the planning committee. One of the things that we hope folks understand is, is we looked at this spring as a series of events versus one event. So we looked at all the evidence practices that were out there. You'll see the PIO office is going to launch a really great social media opportunity for kids. We're getting pictures in there. The car feature was taking the best of all these different examples and not just having one event, but trying to piece together as many memorable opportunities as possible. So just wanted to let folks know that we're hearing you out there and we're not trying to replicate it all in one vent, but really try to create as many of these unique opportunities to honor our seniors as much as possible.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Garcia. Are there any last questions or comments on this topic? Vice President Cobb, your hand icon is waving at me.
I just have a quick comment related to the task force that the state superintendent's office has pulled together. I'm absolutely biased because I used to work for the superintendent. But I will just say, in the last four years of his term, I think he's done a great job of building like relationships and coalitions of education stakeholders. So that list of people, I was looking through it and I think there's a really strong membership there of people who care and have kids in the same way we do. So I'm actually really looking forward to seeing what some of the recommendations are that come from the group. I know that those people don't all agree and don't all think the same. So I expect there might be some push and pull in the recommendations. So I just wanted to say to our, us as colleagues on the board that I think we should really pay attention to what comes from it, not necessarily take it all, but know that it's going to be thoughtful and well-considered. And that's, it's a good group of people from my perspective.
Yeah. Thank you for sharing that, Vice President Cobb. And yesterday I had formal written communication with the governor's office and OSPI. And I thanked them for being data-driven and evidence-based in the recommendations that have come out so far. You know, it's easy for us from our Tacoma perspective to lose sight of, they have 295 school districts in the state of Washington, 2,000 of which, or 200 of which have 2,000 students or less in the entire school district, pockets of COVID in some areas and really no COVID in others. So yeah, I would echo your sentiments and to let you all know that I, I thank them because there's clarity. We may not always agree with the guidance that comes out, but there definitely has been a methodology applied that leads us to better understand the rationale. And Superintendent Santoro, before we move on, just want to thank you for also sharing the lessons learned. I think it's easy, especially in this board meeting format, to come in and to have it be all the rah rah, look at all the great things that are going on. And we're in uncharted territory. And as a continuous improvement organization, a learning organization, we have to better understand, hey, this didn't quite roll out the way we had intended. And I saw an example of that, you know, the board very thoughtfully at our last board meeting, which was three hours and I will endeavor to keep us south of that three-hour mark tonight. But in that meeting, we took up a grading policy. And there's a lot of thought put into that final decision and adoption of that final grading policy. And then the rollout, right across dozens of schools and hundreds, thousands of teachers. And how do you build continuity? And I think initially there was some miscommunication, but I will tell you, on the parent's side, I've seen the communication improve. I've seen buildings learn from the rollout. I've seen there be more understanding of what distant learning entails and how to send emails that don't overwhelm parents, how to coordinate at the building level to de-conflict, hey, we've got the access to Microsoft Teams that students don't have competing calls at the same time. Lead time, trying to get students and parents some information ahead of the upcoming week so that they can plan accordingly, knowing that we've got a lot of kids and families that are working out of the same home, that are sharing devices, that are competing for the bandwidth, those families that are fortunate enough to have access to the internet and multiple people trying to get on. So I would ask on behalf of the board that you continue to give us the good, but also lessons learned so that we can figure out in our oversight capacity, what things we may be able to do to help streamline and also to demonstrate that we're being responsive. And a lot of these things have happened in near real time. Some things have taken a little bit longer. But I do appreciate that there's evidence of us learning because we've never been in a nine-week distant learning platform before. So there's a lot of great opportunities for us to learn and get better. And given what I, what we're hearing about what the fall may look like, we may be in a distant learning posture for a while. So, so thank you for helping us as a board and as a community to better understand what's working well and what we can continue to get better at.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Sure. On the agenda is members of the public wishing to address the board. I will remind the viewing audience that we have a new protocol in place that is based on the governor's emergency proclamation and as defined by the Attorney General's Office as it relates to the Open Public Meetings Act. And that we are accepting written comments 24 hours in advance of the board meeting. Are there any written comments that have been submitted for this board meeting, Superintendent?
No, there have not.
Okay, thank you. And when there are, those written comments become a part of the formal record. They get noted in the minutes and they get posted. And board members have an opportunity to review whatever is expressed by the person submitting the comments and have conversations in follow-up with the superintendent. Vice President Cobb, did you have a question or comment? I think you're muted.
I just have a comment. And while it's not like formally part of the public record, I do want to let all those folks who are watching us live know that, I'm sure, at least I do and I think all of you do, we all go back and read your comments after the meeting is over. So if there's something that you didn't get a chance to submit in advance, just know that we're going to read it. So please keep the comments coming. We take it and, take it and consider it and appreciate it.
Thank you. Item number seven, essential matters. 7.1, approval of resolution number 2081, unlimited tax general obligation refunding bonds, 2020 tax exempt. Ms. Medina.
Thank you. I'll just give a quick intro and then I think you might want to introduce it.
it. Several years ago, Congress eliminated tax exempt advanced refundings when they revised the tax code. And we have heard that Congress is entertaining the opportunity for districts or any municipal agency to be able to sell tax exempt advanced refunding or refinanced, tax exempt bonds, excuse me. The resolution in front of you is a mirror to what we presented on April 9th, resolution 2075. And it basically provides us with an opportunity to choose either the tax exempt market or a taxable market, provided that Congress allows us to do a tax exempt refunding. So at this point, we have approval to move forward with a taxable refunding that would refinance on our current outstanding bonds that would save taxpayers money. This just provides us with yet another opportunity to save even more money if we're able to do a tax exempt refunding. The market is recovering pretty nicely. We have an expectation that we could be in selling bonds to refinance as early as June, maybe into July. And we're watching Congress very closely. It's been heard that they may include this as part of the COVID legislation, the next, the next round of stimulus for COVID. So no guarantees that this will come to fruition, but we're being poised nicely to act with whichever opportunity is our most advantageous opportunity for taxpayers.
All right. Thank you.
And I believe you need to call the motion, President.
Well, okay. Is she going to read the preamble to recommend that we approve it?
I think first we need a motion to, to hear the resolution.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve resolution 2081?
I still move.
I second.
Thank you. The chief financial officer recommends that the board of directors approve resolution number 2081, provided for the refunding of current outstanding bonds and the reissuance of unlimited tax general obligation refunding bonds, 2020 tax exempt.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 And do you want a roll call vote on the resolution, President?
Sure.
So President Hines?
Aye.
Vice President Cobb?
Aye.
Director Baumright?
Aye.
And Director Keating?
Aye.
Resolution passes 4-0.
All right. Thank you. Item number 7.2, the second reading and adoption of policy 6000 revision management support. Is there a motion to approve?
I still move.
I second.
Is there a second?
I second.
And the general counsel and the chief financial officer recommend that the board of directors adopt the proposed policy 6000. Through the work of the committee of the whole, we found that there were some updates needed to this policy. These revisions bring the policy in compliance with best practices as defined by the Government Finance Officers Association and also with the WASDA model policy.
Thank you. And I would add, this is one of the board's priorities that was established during our retreat. And it is nice in these unusual times to continue to be making progress on items that the board has identified as, as a priority. And especially would like to thank our general counsel and our chief financial officer with all of the other things that you've had going on because of this public health crisis. Thank you for the staff time to get us to this point where we can take formal action and cross something off the list. Are there any questions or comments on the policy 6000 revision? Hearing none. All of those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries 4-0. Item 7.3, approval of minutes of April 19th, 16th, and 23rd, 2020 school board meetings. Is there a motion to approve?
I motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Superintendent?
The superintendent recommends that the board of directors approve the minutes of the April 9, April 16, and April 23, 2020 school board meetings.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Vice President Cobb?
No, no questions or comments for me.
Okay.
Your, your hand is up.
All right. Your virtual hand was up. All right. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries 4-0. Item 7.4, approval of increase in purchase order to Washington State Employment Security Department. Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
The assistant superintendent of human resources recommends the increase in the purchase order for the Washington State Employment Security Department for total expenditures of $500,000 during the 2019-20 school year.
Thank you. And Dr. Nolan, could you provide us an explanation of why this is necessary?
Yes, certainly. As of April 30th, we have processed 334 unemployment claims due to the fact that anyone who was in a non-paid status, which mostly represents our substitutes and hourly employees, have filed for unemployment. This is an increase over 17 claims the previous year. So our original purchase order was for $199,000, but in order for us to meet the claims that are out there, we anticipate that we will need an additional $301,000 at this time.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries 4-0. Item 7.5, the second reading and adoption of the 2020-2025 strategic plan benchmarks. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
I second.
The superintendent recommends that the board of directors approve the benchmarks for the 2020 to 2025 strategic plan.
I would, again, this is an item that has been on our priority list for the year. And in the midst of the craziness, we were about to have a strategic plan that expires. I commend the board for the great work coming through a committee of the whole and multiple study sessions. And the superintendent and Dr. Garcia and their internal team. I think we did a lot of really thoughtful work on this a couple of weeks ago to get it to this point. And while the delivery method, I know that there's been some questions around focusing on the strategy right now and the benchmarks right now. I think what this strategic plan represents is the expectation of educational outcomes for all students and families in Tacoma, as expressed by the board. And I think what inevitably will have to change is that Superintendent Santorno, as the chief executive, will have to identify how those delivery methods may change as a result of what we're experiencing with this public health crisis and as a result of what we've learned during this public health crisis. But that the strategic plan and the benchmarks represent the expectation of the board and our oversight responsibility. So again, it's great to, after months and months of work, to be in a position where we can cross something else off of the list. Are there any questions or comments on the strategic plan? Director Baumright goes old school and actually.
Yeah, old school.
Director Baumright?
Yeah, thanks. Yes, I just had one clarifying comment for something that I had in my notes that we'd said that didn't end up in the second reading materials. And that was, and it might not be necessary, but under the goal three, early learning, we, under preschool, where we'd had a number of students being served in preschool programs, I know that we noted in the conversation when we had it that we put in Tacoma Public School District preschool programs because it's a little confusing otherwise, given that how many other preschool programs kids are in that are not Tacoma Public Schools. So I didn't know if that was a needed clarifying point. So Dr. Garcia, I don't know if that makes sense to you or not, but if it's clear the way it is, I'm, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
We, all of our data is based off of the Tacoma Public School students that are with us. We have no problem though, if we want to amend that, and this would be the time to do that. But the data is just for Tacoma Public School students.
Okay. And if everyone's clear, I'm fine with it. I just, it's the only one that's so confused. I mean, there's so many preschool programs out there. I just want to make sure we were clear. So I, what's the, if anybody else thinks it needs to be done, we can. And then my other comment is a comment, and that's on, as you may recall, we had quite a long conversation last time about social emotional learning. And since that conversation, I have met with some of the district leadership around SEL and, and had a long kind of debrief about what we have and what we, what would make, you know, where we're going with, with social emotional learning and how we can track that. And one of the, I just, I know that we are not doing prioritization of benchmarks at this point, but I just want to put into the ear of those, of the board members to, to know that when we come to goal four, which is the health and safety one, we have that new one that's under all schools. Each school will complete and publish a summary of the annual social emotional learning plan. I will, when we get to the point of talking about priority, I will be recommending that we make that a priority benchmark so that that gives Dr. Garcia and Superintendent Santono and the staff guidance around coming up with touchpoints and some benchmarks internally that they can come back to us and so we can guide that understanding of how social emotional learning is developing and how it's tracking with kids. So just, that's just a heads up on this note.
All right.
Thank you for all the hard work that Superintendent and Deputy Superintendent you've done and the team has done to get us to this point and the many conversations. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments on the strategic plan? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries 4-0. Item 7.6, approval of a resolution regarding emergency waiver of school days and instructional hours. Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval.
Is there a second?
I second. I'll second.
Superintendent Santorno?
The superintendent recommends the board approve the resolution adopting the district's continuous learning plan and supporting the application for a waiver of school days and instructional hours. And we've got Malik Janro and Dr. Garcia that can speak to the continuous learning plan.
All right. Thank you.
Malik, or Malik, did you have a prepared statement?
Sure. Yeah. So this resolution 2082 comes about as a result of a change in the law that took effect on April 29th. Our number of school days in a school year and number of instructional hours we offer to students is set by state statute. Because of the COVID school closures, a number of school districts in the state, including Tacoma, are not going to meet the statutory minimum number of school days, even by adding some days to the school year. As a result of that, the new law provides a process for school districts to apply for a waiver of that statutory number of school days, minimum number of school days and minimum number of instructional hours. And this resolution speaks to that. So the eligibility criteria for this waiver are addressed in this resolution. It includes extending the school year up to five days until June 19th, 2020. It includes this school board adopting the district's continuous learning plan, which is an outline of the various ways in which the school district intends to continue distance learning through the rest of the school year. And the resolution also includes this board's approval of the superintendent's authority or authorization for the superintendent to file this school day and instructional hour waiver, which comes available tomorrow, May 15th, from OSBI. If there's any questions, happy to go into any future.
Thanks, Malik.
Yes.
Thank you, Deputy General Counsel. Dr. Nolan, did you have anything to add from an HR perspective?
Certainly. And I would like to add that although we won't meet the number of days, we will actually surpass the required instructional hours. So our community can rest easy that our students will still have access to even, even above the number of instructional hours that are required. Of course, extending the calendar means lots of conversations with our labor groups and we are poised well to move forward and continue to serve students through June 19th. This is definitely a collective effort and all who participated in this are very appreciated. I think that we've got a great product to support students and to meet all the criteria that was laid out by Malik.
All right. Thank you. Superintendent Santorno, what's the communication plan to let families know that the school year has been extended?
So Director, Dr. Keating, I mean, excuse me, Dr. Nolan has already started and has worked with Dan Vopel, and they've got communication all ready to go. And it'll include, you know, our typical, and I think they've gotten a preamble, haven't they, Dr. Nolan, or no? No preamble yet?
Yes, there's, there's, there's been a preamble. Our staff, it's been communicated with all of our staff. So our, our staff are aware that we will be extending the calendar and our principals have talking points and many of them have introduced this concept to our families. But rest assured, in that Sunday night robo-call, there will be communication that goes out to our families extending the days. A side note, we have varied dates for graduations. The official last day for seniors will be June 15th. That's part of the obligation that's set, that's set forth in the emergency ruling. But that's their official last day and their graduation dates will not be impacted. And so I think families will be happy to hear that. And then it will be on our website and our calendars are all ready to go to be posted online when this meets your approval.
Thank you. So I hear we'll adopt it tonight and then as part of the regular Sunday communication to families, as well as social media and website, a broad announcement to make people aware of the change. Thank you. Any additional questions or comments on the resolution? Hearing none. General counsel, I believe this requires a roll call vote?
Yes, thank you. President Hines?
Aye.
Vice President Cobb?
Aye.
Director Baumright?
Aye.
Director Keating?
Aye.
And Director Leon?
Aye.
The resolution passes 5-0.
All right. Thank you. Item number eight, the announcement of future board meetings. The board will be meeting next Thursday at 6:00 PM for a study session. The topic of the study session is family engagement. Family engagement was one of the three priority policy issues that the board committed to undertake this year. Appreciate Vice President Cobb's leadership on keeping this on the forefront, particularly given everything that's going on. The purpose of this study session will be to examine kind of that overall policy, but also to have conversation around what are we doing in real time, given the public health crisis with respect to family engagement. So I look forward to that. It's an important topic. And it'll be great to learn from the superintendent and her team, recommendations for how we continue to think about engaging all, all of our families in Tacoma. Then we'll be back on Thursday, May 28th for a regular business meeting. As of right now, then the next formal meeting, I believe, is Thursday, June 25th. A month is way too long to go, given how quickly things are unfolding during this public health crisis. And as I mentioned earlier, we anticipate needing to come together in some form of a committee of the whole or a study session, probably mid-June, to begin working through what reopening options make the most sense for Tacoma. So definitely put that as a placeholder. In fact, I may ask Tanya to send out a placeholder just for that second Thursday in June. In fact, I may ask Tanya to send out, uh, a placeholder just for that, uh, second Thursday in June. Director Cobb and I will work with the superintendent during our normal agenda review, and we'll also work individually. We'll reach out to make sure that that date's going to work for board members. But I think it's becoming clear that that's going to be vitally important for us to get together mid-June. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Superintendent Santornos?
I'm good.
All righty.
I have a comment for the good of the order.
Sure, Vice President Cobb?
Um, in our last board meeting, we had a lengthy discussion about grading policy, and we adopted a policy. The one lingering question that's been on my mind, um, in, in part in response to some of the comments that we had in the Facebook feed, were, um, concerns about, um, the fact that Seattle had adopted an all-A policy, and that's not the direction that we went, and just, um, concerns about disadvantage that they might, that, that might put some of our students in, uh, how it might disadvantage some of our students who are competing with Seattle students for positions at like U-Dub or. So the question that's been lingering for me is with, is whether the OSPI guidance requires that districts note on the transcripts in addition to the fact that that was a COVID-impacted grade. It, the question for me is whether OSPI is requiring that we indicate what the policy was that was adopted during that period of time. I think, um, and I might be wrong, that if districts were required to indicate what the policy was related to that asterisk or whatever, that that provides a level of transparency around what the policy context was for that A or for that B. So I just had a question about whether that's a requirement. I know that we have a state transcript and all that. And if it isn't a requirement, I would just ask whether, if Carla and the leadership team could consider whether or not that would be a good ask to put to OSPI. Not saying that I think the board should take that action, but just considering whether that would be a good, um, addition to the guidance to request that OSPI adopt.
We can investigate, investigate it further. We hadn't talked about that at all, so.
Thank you.
From a technical side, OSPI is working with, uh, on that universal transcript. All grades across the state, uh, will have the same common COVID indication. And, um, you know, we have, we have other partners that went through, uh, surrounding school districts that did an A through D model, for example, uh, and there. So there is, uh, there is not one way anyone's doing it, um, and, um, but all high school transcripts will have an indication with a COVID-impacted grade.
All righty.
Which I know is a little different than your request, but just.
Yeah, I understand that the, I knew COVID and that indicator was required. But what I'm asking, like you said, is if there could be a companion notation that explains what the policy was. Thank you.
All righty, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Stay safe.
Director Hines, sorry, or President Hines, I actually have a comment.
Okay, Director Keating?
I have one after.
Somebody else out there is not muted? If you could please mute your phone?
Um, I just wanted to say, last Thursday, um, I attended virtually, um, the Urban League's, um, uh, state of, um, Black Tacoma. And I wanted to, um, comment about Superintendent Santorno's, um, presentation. And I thought it was really, um, I thought there was a lot of transparency behind it. There was a lot of just acknowledgement of not fully understanding the depths of the inequities that our families and students face in Tacoma. Um, and I thought that it was just really, um, of, an excellent presentation, and I really appreciated, um, just the, um, honesty around what do we really, what, what are we facing? And as we're in the middle of, um, I mean, we've talked about equity, especially in this pandemic. And so I just felt that it was really important, um, to hear that from our superintendent, particularly in that forum. Um, and then the other thing that just, um, gives me a lot of encouragement around equity is I've been participating, um, in a racial equity course, um, that's being put together, or, uh, I think we have one more session by Jamad Canley, and it's been one of the most dynamic, um, equity courses I've taken. And there are about a hundred and seventy-five people, I think, taking it, and the vast majority of people are Tacoma educators, um, teachers, instructional coaches, principals. We have multiple schools that have their entire staff, um, participate, or their teaching staff participating. Um, and I think, and I know Director Bombright, um, is also participating in this work. And I think that it really, um, gives me a lot of hope in terms of addressing systemic racism and inequities and how we can institutionalize this work. So I just want to share that, um, I've been, um, it's given me a lot of hope, um, of what, how we can actually move forward and bring the community together and, um, move, help deconstruct these barriers, um, on behalf of our students and, um, education. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Uh, we will be back here next Thursday, March twenty first, for the family engagement study session. Everybody be well. We are formally adjourned.
Thank you. Director Leon is trying to, he's joined us.
Are you kind of crossing up?
I'm sorry, who's, I, I don't see who's talking.
It's in, it's, uh, Director Leon. We can't, we can't, we can't hear you, Director Leon. I mean, you're kind of garbled.
Oh, I have a poor connection where I am. Okay, if you're, I'm pretty garbled. I'm going to save my comments, uh, for the next meeting.
Oh, we can hear you now, though.
I can hear you now. But it's better now.
Okay, all right. So I, I just wanted to make a few comments, uh, the graduation, uh, process that we're going through, and how thoughtfully it's being done and safely it's being done here in Tacoma. And I'm speaking for, if, if a parent of a senior graduating, and I know that there's a lot of grieving going on in our community for not having this celebration in the world. I wanted to reassure all of our parents and students that the way we're going to have it is going to be thoughtful and be, um, safe. To have, um, these big public events, a lot of folks have been, uh, recommended. But it is something that is real, and the grieving process is something we're going through in my family, uh, with my daughter in the same shoes that many of our families are in. But it really is the safety of our community that's important. And of all these families that are involved with our students that we're thinking of as a primary, a primary goal. So the last, and the second part of this is, is equity pieces around, um, folks thinking about bringing trades with cars, uh, we've done some with cars already, but not all of our students have access to a car, car that they feel comfortable being seen in. So it's important to think about that as an equitable, that is, um, that to be considered of. And the last thing I'll mention is that I was at the stadium in the Lincoln High School, um, diploma and gown, um, pass out session, which was also a celebration from the teachers, um, that were there. And it was wonderful schools. I mean, there was emotion and wonderful things that were being said, joy. I'm sure there were tears of sadness there from teachers and students, but it really, really was thoughtfully done and safely done. So, I know all the schools have done something similar, and maybe not exactly the same. We have done something in person, and, uh, I congratulate all those seniors that are out there and have gone through that process. That's all I have.
All righty, thank you, Director Leon. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, we are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.